We have a quorum, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a February 6, 2018 County Commission meeting. A little tribute to the SpaceX Elon Musk with a little David Bowie, Starman. I'd like to give a quick congratulations for the successful flight that went off today and to Brevard County, the Space Coast. We build rockets here, and it's a good place to live, and I'm so proud of all you guys for all you do. The heavy lift rocket that went off today has 27 engines. It's equivalent of 18 Boeing 747 aircrafts. It is carrying a red Telsa Roadster, code name Starman, in honor of David Bowie, who just entertained us. They installed extra batteries, so hopefully the song will last a little longer on its way to orbit Mars. They had the side boosters land at Kennedy Space Center, and the center booster actually landed on a drone ship in sea. I'm just so impressed with this, and he's really cool, too, if you've ever seen him in person. Over 100,000 people came to see this event, and I must say it was beautiful to see all the people lined up along the river again and the excitement to see this event. It was like the manned spaceflight days. We have a great future here in the Space Coast and the great county of Brevard. So that's how I wanted to open us up this morning. Glad to have you here with us today, and if you'd like to take a moment of silence, then we'll get the meeting started. Commissioner Smith?
Please stand and follow me with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with a ready and just a star.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December the 19th and January the 9th?
So, Lou.
Have a motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 4-0. We have one presentation today, and it is my honor to get to read this presentation. I believe we have a hero in the House, Mr. Melvin Morris. You are a Medal of Honor recipient. If you would come forward, I'd like to read this presentation and all the people that are here to support him. If you'd like to come up, too, we'd love to have you. This is a resolution of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners proclaiming February 2018 as Black History Month with a theme "African-Americans in Times of War." Whereas despite past policies of racial segregation and discrimination, African-Americans have participated in every American war from the Revolutionary War era to the present war against terrorism. Whereas the importance and the contribution of African-American soldiers and sailors and veterans and civilians in America's past, present, and future are significant to the nation's history. And since segregation and the armed services ended in 1953, African-Americans have served at a higher rate than their percentage of the overall U.S. population. Today, nearly 20% of active military are African-American while making up 13% of the nation's population. African-American history is rich in brave stories of valor during times of war such as in the 9th and 10th cavalry regiments. Buffalo soldiers were all African-American units utilized by the Army from 1863 and early into the 20th century to combat the Native American Indians during the Indian Wars. Buffalo soldiers had the lowest military desertion and court martial rates of their time. Twenty-four recipients were rewarded the Congressional Medal of Honor for going above and beyond the call of duty. The 369th Infantry Regiment, the Harlem Hellfighters, which served on the front lines for six months, longer than any other American unit during World War I, and made notable due to the fact because they had received less training. During this time, they never lost any prisoners or territory to the enemy. The 332 Fighter Group, the Tusky Airman, was the first African-American group of pilots to fly combat missions. The 761st Tanker Battalion, the Black Panthers, was a segregated tank battalion in World War II, which fought continually for 183 days. The 761st captured seven German towns, more than 400 vehicles, 80 heavy weapons, and 1,000 of small arms. Whereas this year's resolution is dedicated to Sergeant First Class Melvin Morris, a Medal of Honor recipient who resides in Port St. John. Sergeant First Class Melvin Morris has distinguished himself by acts of gallantry and courage above and beyond the call of duty by serving as a commander of a strike force drawn from Company D, the 5th Special Forces Group airborne, first special forces during combat operations against an Army enemy in the vicinity of Xi Leng, Republic of Vietnam, on September 17, 1969. Sergeant First Class Morris was wounded three times, but ultimately succeeded in returning his fallen comrade to a friendly position. His extraordinary heroism and selflessness above and beyond the call of duty are in keeping with the highest traditions of military service and reflect great credit upon himself, his unit, and the United States Army. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize the month of February 2018 as Black History Month and urges the citizens of the county to be mindful of the contributions of African-Americans and citizens throughout the year. Done, ordered, and adopted the 6th day of February 2018. I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 4-0. Sir, is there anything you'd like to say to us tonight? We're so honored to have you here, sir.
You know, having the Medal of Honor is extraordinary, but it brings a lot of hard work, and which I relish in doing. You know, I have to kind of establish my legacy. So, you know, I could accept the Medal and do nothing, but I choose to do the other, work hard. And so I've been over the entire United States just about. For the last four years, I hadn't quit. I'm on the run. I'm working hard. And for any event that I can further our cause as a free nation, certainly I'm going to work. And I always appreciate having to be being recognized. It's an honor, and I thank you for that. You know, that's all I'd say.
We thank you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have an award to give you.
We'd like to thank you again, Commissioner Pritchett, committee. You know, on behalf of the county manager and the team diversity, you know, we're just excited about this month, Black History Month. Each year, the Association of Study of African-American History Lives, and they recognize the theme, this year's national theme, 2018, as was stated earlier, African-Americans in Times of War. You know, Americans, this is a great time for all the contributions that African-Americans have been made. And this year, on February 27, I provide you with a flyer that Tuesday, February 27, we'll have our celebration in this very boardroom. And this is an opportunity for our citizens, opportunity for you, to come out and take part in this celebration. It will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Our keynote speaker will be Eugene C. Johnson. We look forward to everybody coming out, and we also have an opportunity. We'll recognize some of our county employees who have served in the military and, for example, in our team diversity, those who are veterans. Would you please go ahead and stand that are in our particular diversity team? And so the county is well represented with our veterans, and we want to take that opportunity to recognize them throughout the month, but not just throughout the month, but throughout the year. So we're just extremely happy, and we thank you for taking time to recognize these contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for putting it together. I was able to join you all last year, and it was a lot of fun. Good music, too.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. We're going to move into consent agenda, and I'll take a motion to approve it all at once unless I have a commissioner that would like to pull anything.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 4-0. We are moving into public comments. Ms. Pamela Sal, if you want to come up and... I think they have a presentation for you, too, right?
Just to make it easy for folks at home.
Okay.
Pamela Sal Viera. I'm here to add some information that was not covered in the meeting two weeks ago over the animal ordinance, or rather, basically to rebut some information that was given. In it, it was discussed that trap neuter return works in Alachua County and San Diego County, and here is a study from the Journal of American Veterinary Medical Association, December 1, 2005, Volume 227, Number 11, titled "Analysis of the Impact of Trap Neuter Return Programs on Populations of Feral Cats." The objective was to evaluate a two-county trap neuter return programs for feral population management via mathematical modeling. And those are the animals that were used and assessed. And then the results... That alarm's very disconcerting. I don't know why we have that now. The animals used were in both counties. The results in both counties did not indicate a consistent reduction in per capita growth, the population multiplier, or the proportion of female cats that were pregnant. Conclusion: Success of feral cat management programs that use TNR can be monitored with easily collected set of data and statistical analysis facilitated by population modeling. Results may be used to suggest possible future monitoring. We don't have any monitoring, as far as I know, but trap neuter return, and one of the authors of this is a leading proponent of TNR, and if anyone wanted this to work, it would be that person. And TNR doesn't work. We've unleashed a big problem in this county with the ordinance you all passed two weeks ago. It's going to be... I have never seen anything so pro-cat in my life, and it's very sad to me because human health is being compromised. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Charles Tovey?
Hello. Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne, 32940. My humble apologies for what you inherited, me and my problems, and I am a caring person, and by my attendance and my verbalization, you should see I care about my property and some other things as well, and I'm not a quitter. There is a willingness, but anyways, I have issues with my property still, and I bought the property for the environment and the trees and just the location, but that's all aside. There's not much left, and the little forest I had is down to like five palm, five pine trees and five oak trees. There's not much left, and six months left of your office, so it looks like we're out of... I'm out of luck for this commission. I did want to say I have two cats that I need to adopt. They shouldn't be tortured and run over, and we have animal laws, but nothing is applicable for me in my situation. Some of the captains in our county also have a problem with the sand that is bought or purchased and being issued at the beach. It's not what they call acceptable in their taxpayer dollars. Anyways, I don't have time for a lot of things, but I want you to know that I will be back, and I do have a willingness on all my issues and will apply whatever things I need to do. I did comply, and I did pay all my fines, and yet it continued and it progressed, and nobody can do anything. And what is there left for me to do? They've destroyed everything and my livelihood, everything I made of life. There's nothing left. I tear down the house, and I have five pine trees and five palm trees. Just strip the property, and we'll all be happy? And no, I have my fines and fees that I accrued for the boat that they took inadvertently and the arson of the house, which has never been proven, and I'm wondering why there wasn't a state inspector. Vella was a competent inspector, but I still had arguments with it and was afraid to get arrested and had no... They couldn't bring my papers today. I will be more prepared next time because of the time issue. I'll be back. I only have a few minutes, and I earned my right, and I'm earning my right to come up here and say this. What else is there for me to do? I have nothing. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. That's the last of our comment cards. I'm going to go ahead and open unfinished business. Item A, Mr. Abate.
Thank you. This item is a proposed interlocal agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the City of Cocoa Beach and the Cocoa Beach Redevelopment Agency. You'll recall that we had staff brought a draft agreement back to the Board during October. When the Board considered that particular agreement that had been submitted by the City of Cocoa Beach after deliberations, they had agreed to a variety of items that the Board had previously indicated they were interested in seeing an interlocal agreement with the CRA. However, at the Board meeting, staff received additional direction to seek some language that was not contained. As a matter of fact, they had language that was contrary to what the Board was seeking to have in that agreement regarding whether or not the Board would have the ability to modify the agreement. The authority of the Board is outlined in a certain section, Section 3B of a resolution that had put the CRA into existence, that would have authorized the Board under certain circumstances, limited circumstances, to substitute itself as the CRA Board. That was not agreed to by the city. The city attorney felt, in discussions with us, that that was a primary reason to give the Board some, excuse me, the CRA, some assurance that moving forward, that that kind of situation would not occur, and that would be a good reason for them to enter into the interlocal agreement, which they are not mandatorily required to enter into. The staff ended up taking back the proposed modifications to the city. Initially, the city manager provided documentation that I submitted to the Board back in, I believe, early November, indicating that they were not agreeable to those terms. Subsequently, after we entered into the agreement with the City of Satellite Beach and our interlocal agreement, staff went back to the City of Cocoa Beach and had further discussions to see whether or not they would be willing at that time to incorporate the requested language, because that language was, is found in the interlocal agreement with the City of Satellite Beach. They did give us the courtesy of, the city manager did, bringing that back for consideration before the CRA Board last Thursday evening, and the Board did not elect to move forward with that modification, and they wanted to stay by the agreement that they had previously asked the Board to execute and indicated that basically they had given the Board virtually everything that the Board had requested. So as a result of that, you have this agenda item before you this evening where staff has provided four options for your consideration. Option number one would be to approve the interlocal agreement that was set forth by the City of Cocoa Beach and their CRA, and is attached as Exhibit A. The county, I want to note, you to note that the county did and has corrected a few Scrivener errors that were in that interlocal agreement that was submitted to the Board and considered on October 10. We did not make any other substantive changes to that agreement. The second option is to approve the interlocal agreement that's set forth by the City of Cocoa Beach with changes that the Board requested, and we attach that as Exhibit B. It basically strikes out the language that the city attorney had requested about, the language in Section 3B of Resolution 8128, and included the language that this Board had asked for. If the Board chooses that action, then we would ask that you also direct staff to continue discussion with Cocoa Beach, because obviously we don't have a meeting of the minds on that particular option at this point. Third option for the Board's consideration is to consider with, is for us to continue without an interlocal agreement with the City of Cocoa Beach. And then, of course, there's always the option of the Board providing staff any alternate direction that you may want. So that is what we're bringing before the Commission tonight for your consideration and further direction.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I've looked over these options, and pending further comments from the Board, I would like to make a motion to accept option one.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Barfield. Commissioner Tobias?
I'd like some time to discuss this before we go ahead with a vote, but I imagine that you're in discretion.
No, sir. Did you want to make some comments?
I would, Madam Chair. May I be indulged prior?
Pardon?
May I be indulged now, or did you want to make some...
I'm sorry, I thought I did call on you.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, yes, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, it's unfortunate that I think Commissioner Isnardi had a family emergency and could not be here, and I think it's public because it's on her Facebook, apparently. Everyone's okay. I'm sure the chairman can share a little bit with her, but Commissioner Isnardi, on October the 10th, when we discussed this, said, and I quote, "I would sooner have no agreement than to give up authority to take over the Board if need be." And that's exactly what option one does. Option one provides the county with very little. We asked the Board, we asked the CRA to sunset at an earlier date. The CRA did not. We would be entering into an interlocal agreement that would take away authority from this Board should there be a whole host of issues that could come up with the CRA, as have come up with previous CRAs. So for this reason, along with a lot of others, I don't think it would be wise for us to enter into this agreement that the county receives very little and the City of Cocoa Beach receives quite a bit. This is not a fair, equitable agreement. And just to put it in perspective, it is my understanding that 3B is even located in the Satellite Beach CRA. So my issue is, you know, as our county manager moves forward, it's, I imagine it would be very difficult to negotiate this with providing certain accommodations to some CRAs and not to others. This does not meet most of the conditions that we asked to begin with. Recall that this was the CRA that we gave permission to enter into a whole ton of debt, that being a large parking structure. So I think we've gone the extra mile here, and I would, for one, certainly ask that we table this until we have Commissioner Isnardi come back and enter her opinion as to what she would like to do with us. I think it is that fundamental, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Call for a vote?
Yes, sir. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
May.
Passes 3-1, with Commissioner Tobias in opposition. I will close the unfinished business. We don't have any new business, and I will open up board reports. County Manager?
The only board report is that the Commission did ask for an update. We were going to be meeting with the Homeowners Association for Savannas. That did occur. We did discuss a potential strategy for looking at how to move forward in light of the direction that the Board had provided, actually not the direction, but the discussion, excuse me, that the Board and its input that the Board provided at the last meeting where we discussed golf courses. In light of the dialogue that we had, we... In light of the dialogue that we had, we anticipate they are going to go back, the Homeowners Association and Savannah Partners, to really look hard at the capital needs from their perspective and all the different input that we had, both from county staff and from our... the Board's consultants, and what they themselves are analyzing to... And we have agreed to meet with them and provide them the support that they need to try to further and refine a proposal to come back to the Board within the 60 days. That 60-day period should be approximately around the middle of March. I believe we have a tentative workshop scheduled for that date, so I know the Board was interested in having this item brought back. So, I just wanted to give you an update that we have met. We will be meeting as well. Staff will with Commissioner Isnardi and the golf Brevard on the other courses as well. That meeting will be scheduled in the very near future. So, I don't know if the Board would like to set the March 15th as the workshop date, but if you would, use it for that purpose for the golf, because that will be exactly, I think, just within a week of the 60 days, as the Board had asked for in a prior meeting.
Pleasure with the Board?
I mean, if we need a workshop, I don't know. I'm okay with it, but we may have a... We may have a presentation anyway before that time, so we can always call it off, I guess.
That'll be fine, if that's what the Board would like to do.
Hold on to it. Hopefully, it'll get all worked out before we even get there.
We're going to make sure we make ourselves available to try to be of support and assistance and get that to a point where each group can make a presentation to the Board, and then the Board can consider it and give us further direction.
Okay. So, they're going to be bringing it back to the Commission shortly?
Yeah, we're going to try to... We're going to target that 60-day period.
Okay.
And if we get it before then, of course, we can bring it at a Board meeting before that. Do we want to just... At this point, do we want to leave that date for this particular workshop?
Sure.
And if we get it to you before that, then the Board can consider it an agenda before that?
Yeah.
I think we'd need a motion just to dedicate that workshop to that topic, then.
Commissioner Tabia, did you want to make a comment, sir?
Madam Chair, just a question on that report. You mentioned that you had discussions and you'd sent something to, or you'd spoken with, I guess, Savannah Partners. Can you give us the nickel tour of what that entails that... I know you're... Can you be brief, so we can understand?
Yes. Well, we met with the District 2 Commission Office, and we met with the Homeowners Association, and really looked at a funding strategy that would enable the Homeowners Association to increase its participation. And several Commissioners had indicated that as a potential. And so, the county attorney made a suggestion relative to, you know, how that might be accomplished, what it would take to do that. They considered it. No commitments were made, but they were going to go back and look at it as a strategy that would enable the Homeowners Association to take a more active role in the partnership and be contributing financially, which we all thought was in the... Consistent with the direction the Board wanted to see. And so, we've left it to them to see how to accomplish that, and we're going to work with them to really refine what they believe the capital needs for them to be successful moving forward are, and how the Homeowners Association would be participating in the funding of that. And from their perspective, you know, they believe that the county, and this is, you know, what we heard during the meeting, had some degree of obligation to participate relative to the condition of the course when it's turned over. That remains totally unresolved, and obviously, they'll have to put what they think is appropriate for consideration as they put a total package together. I think that gives a fair representation of what occurred at our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knox?
I have no report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, I do have a report. I want to follow up on the response to the November 21st meeting where I brought up the issue with State Representative Randy Fine sending a letter for recommending a certain company for EOC Design Project. On October 27th, 2017, during the procurement process for the Emergency Operations Center EOC Design Project, Ms. Kimberly Prosser, Brevard County Director, Environmental Management, and Selection Committee Voting Member, received a letter on the State of Florida letterhead from State Representative Randy Fine in support of one bidder for the EOC Design Award. Florida Statute 112.3136, the misuse of public position, states, and I quote, "No public officer, employee of an agency, or local government attorney shall corruptly use or attempt to use his or her official position or any property or resource which may be within his or her trust, or perform his or her official duties to secure a special privilege, benefit, or exemption for himself, herself, or others." Unquote. As I reported, I was concerned that outside influences from a public position such as a sitting state representative could influence procurement such as the EOC Design and others. This was even more important because Brevard County is seeking state funding for construction of the EOC. Well, based on the statute and the facts, I sought to determine if the letter was a violation and if this practice could affect future procurements. To determine if the letter violated the state statutes, I filed a complaint with the Florida Commission on Ethics on December 1st, 2017, and I sought the opinion of the State Attorney's Office, just as I stated I'd do in our meeting. On January 24th, 2018, I received a order dismissing the complaint from the Florida Commission on Ethics. Basically, the Commission on Ethics stated that it is not a violation. In their quote, it says, "It is not corrupt or inconsistent with the proper performance of public duty and wrongful for a representative to send such a letter." Another quote, "The complaint does not allege that the respondent, the representative, received any remuneration in exchange for sending the letter, or that he was connected to the firm in a financial business manner. In addition, the State Attorney's Office stated that the letter does not violate Florida law. As such, the letter did not violate any law. But as I stated on the November 21st meeting, the county procurement process must be a pure process absent from political... Outside political influences, and I ask that we reevaluate our current processes. Based on the decision of the Ethics Commission, there is no state statute that prevents a state official from recommending the selection of a contractor when there's no remuneration in exchange for sending such a letter. I firmly believe that transparency when making contract awards is critical. As a result, I'd like to recommend two things that we include into our procurement process. Number one, if the final award is to be made by the County Commission, copies of any recommendations from any state or federal elected official shall be provided prior to award and become part of the agenda item. And number two, if that contract award, like in this case, where we delegate it to the county manager, is not to be made by the County Commission, it's reviewed with the County Commission before that final decision, so that we know there's been elected officials at the state or federal level to have made recommendations." And that's the end of my report.
Okay, it's appropriate. Do you need us to do anything moving forward, or you want the staff to start working?
County Manager, I don't know if I have to make a motion on that, but...
If the Board wants us to bring back those modifications, we'd be happy to do that. I'd like to get the Board direction from the Board to Brandon, so we can make that in the form of the motion, if you would.
I make a motion that those two items be included into our procurement regulations or policy.
Right.
As it relates to recommendations for contractors from a state or federal elected official.
Okay, I second that motion.
Second.
Oh, yeah. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes four to zero. Commissioner Tabia?
No report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, under my report, I would like to make a motion that we approve the provision for a workshop on March 15th.
You didn't think I was going to do it again, did you?
Yeah, just...
I have a motion for a workshop? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes four to zero.
And that was my Board report.
Okay. I have one I just want to mention. Commissioner Barfield and myself were able to go to an astronaut memorial at the Space Center. Really nice, a large turnout to honor all the fallen space soldiers that, through the past years, have given their lives to further space exploration. Really smart guys and great families that turned out. It was just wonderful, so I just wanted to give a shout out for that. And that's all that I have, and we had a 40-minute meeting, and I call this meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.